Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible. Number two is our invocation, and for that we have Pastor Rodney Mills.
Welcome, sir.
Thank you so much. Let us pray. Father, we just come before you now this evening. Lord, as the city's business is conducted tonight, we're asking your blessing upon it. Father, we're coming to you, the one who has ultimate authority, ultimate power. Father, we're praying that tonight is done with your blessing, with your grace, and with your mercy. And Father, we thank you for all that's gonna transpire tonight. We thank you for your son, Jesus, and it's in his name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, sir. Number three is audience participation, and we have it on the video screen. We want to welcome everybody that's out in everywhere, overland, yeah. Please note that we have a forum present tonight. Number four is our consent agenda. A is action regarding minutes. B is action regarding build and improvement grant agreement with Recker ASAP. C is action regarding resolution number 2023-01 calling for a general election to be held on May 6th to elect the office of City Council Place 4 and 6. D is action regarding ordinance number 2023-06 calling for a special election to be held on May 6th to determine whether the voters of the city of Saginaw desire to continue a sales and use tax for street maintenance in the city. E is action regarding interlocal agreement between the cities of Azul, Lake Worth, Saginaw, White Settlement, Fella Convoy in Reno, and my health, my health, my resources of Tarrant County. F is action regarding salary adjustments for police department. G is action regarding salary adjustments. And H is action regarding Business 287 Green Ribbon Project Phase 2. I have been asked to pull F from staff because they're not quite ready. And if we're gonna pull F, we're gonna go ahead and pull G because we can't make any adjustments until we get some numbers for F. And then I've been asked to pull H.
Mayor Proton, we're ready for council action on F and G. We'll just have a brief presentation to answer questions.
So you wanna leave them?
Off the consent agenda. We'll discuss them individually.
Okay. Okay. So H has been asked to be pulled too, so I'll make a motion, entertain a motion for A, B, C, D, and E.
Mayor, I make a motion that we approve actions A, B, C, D, E on the consent agenda as presented.
Charlie, second. Oh, I have a request on, oh, excuse me, I'm sorry. I have a request on 4D.
Okay, then I change that to remove D.
Yeah.
A, B, C, and E.
Charlie, do you still second those?
I will second.
Okay, so Charlie will second. So everybody vote. Got it? Okay, so 4D is action regarding ordinance number 2023-06 calling for a special election, and for that we will be at Janice England.
Item 4D is for approval of the ordinance to call the call the election to see if the voters want to continue the sales and use tax for the street maintenance. This is something that was originally approved in 2007 by voters. It is good for a period of four years, and each four-year increment, it has been approved for reauthorization. So that, it's on the agenda just simply to call the election to be held on May 6th.
Okay. First, I'll ask him. So do you have any questions or anything?
Yes.
None of my questions are even answered.
Okay. So we have one person that would like to talk, and that would be John Key. Please come to the podium.
Evening all. And everybody back there. Hey, I got a chance to attend a an event last night about legislative priorities and everything. This particular issue, not issue, bill, was passed in 2001. Saginaw took it up in 2007, so either George II or Rick Perry signed this into law, and it's kind of a good thing. But I don't see on it, there is the carve-out for street maintenance, and also is in there for capital for the CCPD, the district control, crime prevention control, and also tax exemptions, okay? What can get tweaked on that? As us voters, we're citizens, we're voting on that, but if you just put it like that for that language just on the streets, and what I saw on the agenda or the packet that I saw on there, that ain't right, okay? So take out more for the salaries for the police officers, the fire department, and, like I've been saying before, these bullets and bandages, okay? If the voters can tweak it, if you just put it out there for streets, put it in there so we can give, you know, this 1% that, whatever, 1 cent that we get back for the 2%, that's a good idea. I'm just saying it could get tweaked for a little bit more than just street maintenance. Because I didn't see that on the sheet of paper that was passed out, you know? If you're gonna call for an election for it, put it out there, put, take more out for the police officers, the fire department, and personnel. The buildings and stuff like that that you got bonds for, the hard stuff, capital improvements, put that in a bond, a separate bond. But if you're getting sales tax revenue, put it for the people, our personnel. That's the most valuable asset. But I did learn something, but I just wanted to share it with you on it, but put it out there, put more than just streets, you know? If it can be carved out more, this general fund, where does the money go for that? Y'all probably know more than I do. I might ask more questions later to find out where it does go.
I bet you could answer that for us.
So we do have the option, the special option for the sales and use tax for CCPD. It was last approved in 2017, and that was for a 10-year increment. So that will be renewed. We'll do it the same manner that we renew the sales tax for street maintenance. No, sir, the CCPD can go for 10 years, so it's not 10 until, let's see, 2027. That will be up to renew by the voters.
What I'm saying is if you put it to the voters for specific items, make it for the personnel. The street maintenance, that's like a capital improvement, you ought to start budgeting for that, not just for the roads.
There's only a limited number of things that we can use special sales and use tax for. They, we're at the maximum of 2 cents. The street and the, the sales tax for street maintenance has overwhelmingly been approved by 82%, 88%, 91, and 85, and the beauty of this is that the streets will be made, part of the funding for street maintenance is not as much of a burden on our residents. The people that are coming in and purchasing things in the city are helping to pay to maintain the streets that they're driving on.
Yes, ma'am, and I also want to point out that each year that it gets put up to election is an off-election year. It's not a midterm, or it's not a presidential election cycle either. So you get hardcore voters to go out there and vote, okay? So we could go either way.
Right, we, we vote on this every four years, CCPD every 10 years.
Yes, ma'am, but it's in an odd year. This is 2023. It's not a mid-year, it's not a presidential. You can get some hardcore voters to change things. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, so I'll entertain a motion for 4D.
Mayor, I move that we accept 4D as it is.
I'll second. Mayor, you second it. Okay, everybody vote. Sorry. Okay. Now, I've been asked to do pull 4H, and that is Cindy Beaufort. I mean Randy Newsome, and then Cindy has a question for you.
So.
Look, I've already read it, so I just thought she was gonna ask a question.
Okay, this is just, when I started the, the Green Ribbon Project Phase 2 down there, we realized that there's actually 2 meters down there on each end of that project that we could utilize rather than punching more holes and run the risk of more leaks underneath the road, so we requested it. I know we do have to run some PVC, do some trenching, but I'd rather have that than 5 new holes underneath the road, so. Anything above the $400,000 that the state funds, the city has to pay the difference, so. That's what, that's what that's for.
Is this gonna, this modification, is this gonna add an extra time to the schedule for finishing this project, or is it gonna be faster?
It's actually gonna speed it up.
Seems like if it speeds it up, it'd be cheaper.
Yeah, it would be, except for pipe prices.
And they wouldn't have to run pipe if they bored underground?
Yeah, but not, not as much.
Okay. And was this money initially approved in our budget? I mean, I know you say it's available in the general fund, but this was not part of our original budget, this?
No, it's, it's over the amount that we had budgeted as our matching share.
Why do we put things that are not budgeted in the consent agenda?
I don't set the agenda, so.
So this, it's a good question. This is an interesting situation that the state manages the project, and the state has said, to Randy's point, their preference is to fix the piping as proposed, so we're sort of in a situation where we've gotta take the project as a construction manager, which is Tech Dot is proposing.
Okay, so we have no choice except to approve this. Is that what you're saying?
That's your understanding? That's mine.
Correct.
Yeah.
I mean, it absolutely makes sense to do this the way that they're proposing it, because you do not, if you can get away with it, you do not want to be putting water pipes underneath a roadway, because there's always that risk of having a break. And if we end up with a break there one time, then it, it'll way more cost us to get it fixed, it'll be down longer.
That's correct.
So, when you come back and you look at it and we find, oh, we can do this, even though it's gonna cost us a little bit more upfront, it's a lot better in maintenance in the long run.
Also, keep in mind that this total city's commitment's about $70,000, and we're getting $400,000 worth of improvements.
Yeah.
I understand.
For that.
So why wasn't, and you may not even know the answer to this, but why wasn't this design brought out first by Tech Dot, who were supposed to be like the uber professionals?
So when they moved in and started, we, we didn't realize or remember that we had, years ago, when they put the trees in down along the boulevard, we put those meters in, and they got just forgotten about. And then whenever they started to work, they said, hey, man, before y'all start punching those holes underneath the road, it'd probably be better just to utilize those existing meters that we have, that we found down there in town and run that way to irrigate those planters.
Okay. All right.
Anybody else have anything? Nick?
No, I'm good.
I'll entertain a motion then for 4H.
Mayor, I move that we accept 4H as it is written.
I'll second. Cindy, second. And it passed. Number five. Consideration and action regarding resolution number 2023-02. What?
Do you want to call F and G?
Yeah, we'll, we'll present F and G now.
Oh, you want to do it now?
To take action, yeah, so Melanie will give an update, and we can answer questions.
Want to go with the police department first?
No, we'll take action. We just wanted to pull them off consent, because there's been some minor changes since the last time.
So, last meeting, y'all, we went over those three different items. For public works adjustments, step adjustments, it was $10,198, and then the recommendation for the increase to everybody to $17.50, and then y'all wanted me to come back and give you adjustments based on the trickle-down effect, so in your packets, y'all have that information. I think Keith is gonna pull it up for us. It's made, added to those two items, the amount is is going to be an additional $34,634. What's the next? The next one, Keith? Yeah, so right there. So that's, that's not including the PDs. The PD has their information over there that Brandon will talk about. But on this, basically, additional adjustment due to trickle-down effect, there's eight people, current employees within the general fund, and then there's eight employees in the enterprise fund, plus three vacant positions. And that's, comes for the total, this is 66,646.
So again, what was the actual change from the first document we reviewed to this one?
It's an additional $34,635.
So that, I think the issue Melanie's mentioning is when we adjust certain employees, we have to create separation for existing employees, and we don't find ourselves in the same situation. So that's
Yes.
the current compression issue, and this reflects making the minimum full-time salary at least $17.50, which affects eight people citywide, plus a number of people that would be, have to adjust, adjust it up so that they're not, you know, making the same money as someone.
Solving that compression problem.
Correct, and then.
And then changing, changing basically the water, the water, the water tax. We can't get any water tax, so that's adjusting the water tax based off us moving public services and some of the other positions from grade 15 to grade 17. So that's part of that.
Only other change y'all defer to the system achieved since the last time was related to dispatch. I'll let him talk about that.
Good evening, Mayor Proton and council. Since I last spoke with you at the last council meeting, there's been some, some updates to our, to our payment plan structure with an actual reduction. I don't know if you remember my presentation, the, the numbers that I gave you were for the entire fiscal year. And keep in mind, if, if this is passed, it will go in as a prorated for the rest of this fiscal year. So that was the main reduction in moving the 11 sworn officers to their correct step and the two non-sworn positions. We did have a 10-year dispatcher accept the position as a supervisor with another agency, taking a significant pay raise. He was one of the two non-sworn positions. We had another dispatcher tender her resignation yesterday to take a job in the private sector. So at this point, we're running pretty critical with our dispatching staff, so staff got together this morning and, and came to an agreement about presenting you hourly wages, an increase at our starting, and also an increase with two years' experience to attract those lateral positions. So we would move our $1,889 up to $21 an hour starting. If you did have the two years' experience with the certification through the state, it would bump you up to $25 an hour. And I can give you the breakdown of what that's gonna cost the remainder of this fiscal year. The 11 sworn officers moving into their correct step, and the two non-sworn would be $31,192, and that's down from my presentation three weeks ago due to it being prorated. Melanie put together a, basically, if we have our dispatch record supervisor moving her into pay grade 26, and then taking seven dispatchers, which we currently do not have, and moving them into the $21 to $25 an hour range, whichever one they qualify for, that would be an additional $17,000, $17,89, $17,892. So you add those two together, you're just a little bit over $48,000.
So, on this, when we move our dispatchers from 21 to 20, in the range from $21,000 to $25,000 an hour, or $25 an hour, I think that's right.
Yes, sir.
Will that put us in good competition with our competitors?
You know, at the top out of the $25, it does. But we're still there at the bottom of the market, but we're headed in the right direction.
Okay.
I think the reason that we, we decided on the 21, starting without experience, to the 25 is, you know, this seems like this younger generation is really latching on to recruitment bulletins that say, hey, you can latterly transfer in for this amount of money.
Right.
So here's our starting pay, but latterly, with two years' experience, you'll start here. That seems to have a big attraction for these, for these employees.
Do you have a comparison of our proposed salary increases to other cities?
Yes, if I've got from my presentation in the last council meeting, or if you saw that Excel sheet on there, that was all of the 24 agencies that we compared everything to. And I don't think, I don't know if Keith has that to bring it up. Yes, sir. No? That's okay, I can actually hand one to you.
If we had moved the, if we'd had, if we'd done this, say, six months ago, would we have lost the people that we're currently losing?
You know, I think so. We had one of those individuals stayed as a dispatcher and took a pretty significant increase in pay to move to a supervisory position. The rest that went to the private sector became state home law.
Yeah.
So, you know, I don't think so.
Yeah. That pesky little private sector, yes.
And out of these 24 cities, just out of curiosity, are they close to our tax rate and our everything kind of apples to apples, oranges to oranges, or no?
Well, we look at, you know, anything within a 45-minute drive to the region.
Well, I understand the 45-minute drive and everything, but.
I don't have the tax rate information, no, ma'am.
That makes a big difference on whether or not we can afford this, and after what Kim said, you know, I'm concerned about these increases. I'm not opposed to them, but something's gonna have to give in order for us to be able to have a balanced budget.
I'll tell you what I'm concerned with. We're not gonna be able to provide basic services if we don't get up to speed with the market. These were brought to your attention mid-year.
Yes, I know.
So that they could be addressed, but we have serious concerns, and these would be ongoing discussions. If we can't cover dispatch shifts, we're forced to contract with another agency at a significant cost. So it's pay me now or pay me more later. That's the decision.
I'm just saying something else needs to be cut.
What are we gonna cut to get this, we can't, we have to have the funds, you can't just grasp out of the air.
Without being a tax burden on citizens.
So, I mean, that's really our only, we're down now to whether we, we, we have to have dispatch. I mean, that's a critical resource. We absolutely have to.
I understand we have to have dispatch.
So.
I think we need to have a workshop or something where we can sit down with all the department heads, talk to them, and find out where we can make cuts. It may be staff, it may be office supplies, it, it may be something. I mean, I don't know.
Kim, what is this gonna do? I mean, we can do this?
Well, 71%, I think it's 71 or 72% of the general fund budget is personnel costs. So you're not gonna make up funding to, to pay for salary increases by cutting office supplies or concrete or asphalt supplies.
What do we have to cut to get there?
You're gonna have to cut people. I mean, that's what it comes down to. Either you're gonna have to raise taxes, come up with another revenue source, or the reductions that it's gonna take to increase salaries would be positions. You're not gonna get there by line items.
I might add, probably the first thing, if it's your desire to reduce service levels, would be kind of discretionary things like recreation. Everybody loves our aquatic center, myself included. It operates at a loss. They lost about $60,000 last year. Would hate it if we didn't open up the aquatic center, but it's certainly not mission-critical like public works and public safety.
Okay, let me ask you a question. I think a couple years ago, you said when we get to build that, we'd need 180 employees, correct? Or somewhere around there, 175, 180, I think is what you.
Yeah, closer to 200, that's correct.
Okay, so, and how many employees do we have right now?
Melanie, no?
179 employees, and now those 179 employees are all of those critical that we have to have. Is there any, I mean, I know we've added a lot of stuff, and I know that cities don't need a lot of extra poof-poof stuff, so is there anything that we can cut that we can help do this with besides the recreation and anything that goes to the citizens? Because in all in all, they're the ones that pay for it.
Absolutely. So it's never been a direction, a majority of the council, to reduce service levels. We went through this exercise at the, the budget process last year. If that's your direction, we're happy to bring you some options, but my recommendation would be we focus on why we're here, which is health and safety, public safety and public works, and then look at discretionary items.
Well, I have no problem with taking care of the city, and I think that we need all of this stuff, the P, the fire department, they're very important. Public Works has to keep our city running, but I think that there's gotta be somewhere that we can cut something to make this happen.
Well, I, I think that it's difficult for a city that's growing to cut things because we have more service demands, but I think what's also difficult is for us, is that the market has shifted up, and we have much smaller cities like Crowley and Azul that have chosen to pay their employees more, and the marketplace for good people is just tremendously competitive.
Oh, I know. I own a business. I know how it is.
Yeah, absolutely.
Somewhere you gotta cut something to get what you gotta have.
Sure.
We only have a certain amount in our bank account that we've gotta keep within, and so, and Kim unfortunately is in control of all that. So we have to have somewhere that we can cut something, that we don't cut out all the citizen stuff, and that we can still make this work, and so maybe we need to have a council or whatever, go around or something and figure this out, because I'm not against giving anybody a raise that deserves it, believe me. Fire Department, Police Department, they need everything they can get, and we have to have that.
Sure.
We have to have public works. We have to have our inspections and all.
So, so where would you recommend cutting?
I don't know. That's, you're there, you're in charge of the employee.
So here's the difficulty for staff. We can't read your mind. We're happy to do whatever you'd like for us to do, but I've told you, health and safety are at core, and we gotta focus on it.
And nobody's disputing that.
Right, that leaves discretionary things like recreation and the library, which people very much value, but if that's your direction, if you want to reduce positions, we're happy to bring that to you.
Okay, so maybe can we have a thing with the department head so we can understand what they need and what they don't need? Can we do that?
Sure. Would you like to have a workshop at the next city council meeting?
Yeah.
Yes.
Something with the department head, so we can hear from them, and so they know where they can, they know better than anybody what they, I mean, I know you do too, but I'm just saying they know what they'd need and what they don't need. And I'm sure there might be somewhere, something that we can just, I'm not trying to get anybody's job or anything like that, because we need our employees, but
Sure.
we have to have the money to do this. It's not that we don't want to.
Right.
Okay, so.
Yeah. I might add too, that as a growing city, our tax base grows, so we will have more financial capacity. The problem is, we have demands on that, so if we keep service levels the same, if we maintain service levels, that is not the same as saying it will come at the same cost, right? Inflation affects all of us, so the same service level, the same staffing levels this coming year costs more than the previous year or the year before, so.
I understand that too. I do.
So with, with losing, I mean, you've lost two now, and we were in trouble last year, and we kind of got, I wouldn't say we got good, but we kind of stopped the hemorrhage, and now we're back. How critical are you over there?
It's critical. We are planning to have meetings tomorrow and sitting down with the dispatch supervisor and coming up with a plan. You have to keep in mind the dispatcher that put in her notice yesterday. We still have two weeks with her, so she's here till the 21st, so that helps. But we have to have a plan for after that happens, and like City Managerium said, there is a very real possibility that we will not be able to staff the dispatch center 24/7.
How many people are you short right now?
Once Savannah leaves, that will be four. But you have to keep in mind, we have, and that's including a new, a new dispatcher that starts this week, and I have a dispatcher that's finishing up her training and will be cut loose next week.
How long is the training?
It can be anywhere between eight to 12 weeks.
But is this dispatchers and officers?
That's for dispatch.
Okay, what about, how many people are you short in the police department right now?
We're short five.
Five officers or?
Five officers, not including dispatcher.
And you said that she was gonna leave in two weeks, and so there's nobody that can replace her in two weeks, right?
No, ma'am.
So in two weeks, we're gonna have to do something.
We're gonna sit down and see if we can formulate a plan. We do have help with part-time dispatchers from Lake Worth. We've got some other things we're, we're thinking about, but we don't know that for certain yet. It's a very. We've got some other things we're thinking about, but we don't know that for certain yet. It's a very real possibility, in my opinion. We'll know a lot more in the next couple of days.
Okay. None of the officers do anything like this, like to help you out?
Correct.
They don't do that at all?
They don't do that.
Yeah.
Yeah, Mayor.
I think it would be a sad state of affairs if we were not capable of dispatching officers to the areas that they are needed. And I think this is a critical situation. I know it is a critical situation, and it is definitely safety-related, which is one of our main, if not our main objective in the city, is the safety of our citizens. If we were to approve the $25, I mean, $25,000 for the dispatchers, when would that go into effect?
I believe, Melanie, did you say February 9th?
Yeah, tomorrow.
Okay.
The night, Thursday.
And the sooner that would go into effect, the sooner you could hopefully get that, those positions filled.
Well, that's, that's the thought process. You know, increasing the hourly wage isn't going to fix our problem right now. It's going to head in the right direction, but like I said, we're going to try to come up with a game plan to where we can, we can make things work in the short term, to where we get back on our feet with those positions.
How many other departments around here are having similar problems with dispatchers? I know where my brother works, he's a dispatcher also for the Police Department, and they have a huge turnover, like every month.
Yeah, I don't have specifics.
So I, you know, it has nothing to do with, it has little to do with the money. It has more to do with the stress level.
It's a multitude of things. I mean, I think when you look at the percentages of how far dispatch is behind, how far dispatch supervisor is behind, you know, I think it's imperative that we address that.
Even if we raise the minimum wage, we have no guarantee this will solve our problem.
On a short-term basis, no ma'am, but I think it's a step in the right direction on a long-term solution.
Was, did, I had heard that the person who just left, I think they may have went to supervisor, presumably. They increased their pay by $20,000.
It was right around that.
Right around that. I mean, we're, I have looked at this out there, and I got a little bit about, I know all the cities around here are hurting, but you are right that there is a point where salary doesn't matter. But I can tell you right now, I've looked at this, salary matters in Savinaw. We're way underpaying, and it is affecting.
I, I know it matters. I'm just saying it's not the only thing.
No, it's not, it's not the only thing, but I will say that right.
There's no guarantee, even with the.
There's certain things, all of us, when we're looking for a job in the outside world, and one of them is, am I getting a fair pay for an honest day's work? Okay, that, that is usually one of the top, and then the other is, is work-life balance, okay? If you don't, if we're not giving a fair pay for an honest day's work.
And benefits.
Then they're not going to go to the second one. And so, yes, we will still lose high-volume people because this is a high-stress thing, but right now, what we're going to have is, we're not even going to get out the gate of being able to get people in here that's any good because our starting salary and our salary is so low. And that's what, that's what, excuse me, so if we can't come up with a solution, then we immediately need to say, we're going to outsource this, and, and we need to start looking at that. So I, I don't, I don't know. I mean, I can tell you, in, in the private sector and things, if, if, you know, you have to get that salary, right? We're not, we're not, this is, this salary isn't getting our, getting the employees to the top 10%. It's just getting us in, it's just getting us in the ballgame.
I understand, but I'm just saying we, as a council, we are expected to look at the whole picture, not just a little portion of it. And that's why I'm asking these questions.
Oh, yeah, and I agree with them.
There's, I mean, we have to look at the burden on the taxpayers. We have to look at, is there anything that the city can do to try to alleviate some of this financial burden? These are all things that need to be seriously looked at. The question is, you know, if we raise this, are we going to, is that going to bring people in? Yeah, well, I think so. That doesn't give me a lot of warm fuzzies, you know.
It gives them, it gives them another.
It's a starting point.
Yeah, it gives them a knob to turn, that they currently don't.
And I, and I don't disagree with that, but I don't want to focus on that one thing. We need to look at the whole picture. The other thing I was thinking about, and maybe Chief Spears can help us with this, is we have this mutual agreement with other cities. I mean, is there ever a point in time where we're going to be looking at mutual agreement with multiple cities for dispatchers? Is that even a feasible solution?
I think that's the outsource, right? They're, they're looking at that. If, if we want, but that means we give up that, I mean, and that's an actual option. Private companies do it all the time. It's like us outsourcing the land.
I'm not talking about outsourcing. I'm talking, well, like Joe Laster, you know, he was shared between two cities. You know, do we do that with like Lake Worth, shared dispatchers, and Blue Mound, and whoever else that we need to bring in?
There is a lot of conversations going on with consolidation of dispatch services. It's just that it's in infancy right now. Fire Department Services, we share dispatch. We obviously share one with Fort Worth, but the police dispatch is just now gaining traction. There's talks amongst all the cities and the county, the city of Fort Worth, the Tarrant County 911 District, about consolidating dispatch centers because it is costly for all the equipment and staff. But that's, that's going to take a while for us to get to that point. And we've talked about outsourcing dispatch. That's not so simple to do that. You kind of lose control of, of what you do. Contracting that with another city is not something I would be in favor of. I ran a dispatch center. I know what it takes. And the question earlier, are all the other cities experiencing trouble with dispatch? Yes, they are. Every city in the county is struggling to keep dispatch staff. It's, it's a problem.
That's why I'm wondering, if we do this, and we go ahead and vote for it, which I'm for, but is it going to fix, I mean, are we going to have dispatchers to take care of us?
If you choose to do nothing, which is always an option, I promise you, we can guarantee you the, the same results, which are multiple vacancies in many departments, which is why we brought this to you, you know, mid-year. So I think it's a step in the right direction. I'll remind you that this will be the, probably the largest item in our budget discussions going forward. We, we have tentatively told you that we think 5% cost of living adjustment for employees is reasonable this year, especially given the fact that the Social Security, Social Security adjustment for '23 is 8.7%. We're all dealing with inflation, but if we don't take care of our employees, we're, we're going to be in a tough, tough spot. And if we don't keep pace with our competitors, which are local cities, we can't hope to get to the Assistant Chief's, you know, point, good applicants, qualified people when we have vacancies.
And then also, you have it to where you have so less dispatchers. They're getting worn out because they're having to do double shifts and more shifts. So that's not good for them either.
I mean, unfortunately, you know, the baby boomers are, are retiring. The next generation, there's not as many of them. And, you know, you can read it. We've all read the reports and stuff, so it is making the market tight. And, you know, it's supply and demand, right? Unfortunately, this right here is our competition. I can tell you, like I say, everybody knows my wife works in Arlington, Fort City, and she gets, she's gotten two or three little, little posters, just delivered to them out, please come work for City X. And all of the city employees that are in these tight markets, I guarantee you, are getting these. I guarantee you that anybody here that has a water license, see or better, has gotten three or four of those.
You get them. Randy gets them every, every week.
Yeah, so it's, you know, and so we, it, we're going to have to stay somewhat competitive. I think that absolutely, I do agree. I think the council needs to have a working session on this to look and see and figure out, you know, what can we cut? And, you know, what do we have to do? But, you know, this is, definitely this year, this is a, this is a critical need. This is, we either, we either immediately outsource it, or we figure out how to give the Police Department and the rest of the managers the money to at least have a fighting chance.
If in three months, we still can't bring anybody else in, what are y'all going to do? Come back to us and ask for more money?
No, I think we've got really two good applicants that just completed an oral board interview that are in their current phase of background investigations. And then with the dispatcher that's being released next week and the dispatcher starting Thursday, you know, and I think I said that three weeks ago, there's light at the end of the tunnel. That was before the two dispatchers left, but I still think there is. But you do have to keep in mind the two dispatchers that left were certified training officers. Therefore, that leaves me with only one dispatcher that can train. That poses another issue that we're going to address this week. But I do think there is light at the end of the tunnel with some of the applicants.
How long did you say you'd take to train them?
Anywhere between eight to 12 weeks.
Ken, who does the training? Do we do training in-house? Do we go to TCC? Where does this training happen?
Their certified training course is done in-house.
In-house, okay.
Yes, sir.
So we bring them on, then we train them, and then they take.
Then they have to go take a state licensing course to get their, their basic certification.
Yeah.
And they have up to a year to obtain that.
Have two years to obtain that?
One year.
Oh, one year. Okay.
And as soon as they get certified, then they automatically get a bigger raise off?
Correct. In our new, in our new pay structure, yes, ma'am.
Yeah, I remember last year when you did, I asked for the credentials, what it took, and I was like, holy cow. It's, it's a lot. It's, it's pretty impressive.
I have a question for Melanie. When we talked on the previous section, not the Police Department, about the compression, how many employees are affected by that compression?
So there's based, in general fund, there's eight, and then in the enterprise, there's eight.
Okay, I thought those eight were the ones that we were bringing up.
No, that's the one, these are ones that are, after that 1750, you have people that are already making that. We're moving them up. That's the compression.
Okay, so if we bring the minimum wage, okay, that, that adjustment is $34,000?
No, the minimum wage, let's see. The one for the 1750 is $21,000, $21,813. To make them, everybody, the eight people plus the four vacant, the 1750. And then with the, the people with the trickle-down effect, that's $34,635. That's going to be eight for general fund and then eight for enterprise, or 11, or 11 for the enterprise fund. But there, there's three vacant positions in that.
So we're, so the 21 and the 34 adds up to the 66?
Yes.
Okay.
Correct.
So if we approve this, can we make it conditional that we have that workshop at the next meeting?
Can we do that?
Yeah, I think.
If we approve this, can we have a workshop so that all the department heads can, so we can see what we can whittle away at? Maybe, might not be anything to whittle away with.
Sure, we can have another workshop to discuss. Happy to do that.
Okay, and we'll bring the department heads in?
Sure. I would recommend it be at a council meeting. We have all our department heads here, so.
That'd be great.
Yeah.
Okay.
Could do that again.
So, so Kim, after, when we pull the trigger on this and do it, it's going to be, what is it? How much total?
66.
66 plus 48?
$114,000.
$114,000.
927, uh, 927.
And that's not the police part?
That's totally, the Police Department and everybody.
Yeah, that's everything. Okay, so cool. So in order for us to stay on budget and stay whole by the end of the year, somehow we would have to figure out.
And this is just partial, right?
I think, I think for, it would be the eight months, so you're going to have a full 12 months next year. I think, I mean, we're only a third into the year, so I can't guarantee you that we can cover it. But between vacancy savings, sales tax is still pretty strong this, this year. Some of the other fees are lagging a little behind, but it's, I'm confident that we can, will be fine for the rest of this fiscal year. My comment last, last council meeting was just that keep in mind that there will be a full year of funding next year and that, you know, I don't want you to be surprised when the tax rate increase is presented to you to pay for salary adjustments.
So, so this year, we're okay, but we need to be looking, and next year is when it's going to hit us.
Correct. I think that we have between the increase, I think between the strong sales tax and vacancy savings that we can cover the adjustments for the current year.
So when we look at it at the next council meeting, then what we'll be looking for, I guess, is potential items that we could cut to offset this next year. So like, like we don't have the Fourth of July thing. I don't know if that would, would positively impact this. Is that something that, if we didn't do that, we could take that money and it would directly affect this?
Correct. I mean, there's, there's a couple of different ways to, to balance the budget.
Right, yeah, I know. I'm just trying to figure out which knobs I got to turn.
Right. I mean, we've, we've tried increasing fees, and that hasn't gone over so well. And, you know, and the other is, is to make reductions.
How much would you, and we're not going to hold you to anything, no feet to the fire. What would you estimate that the tax would have to increase next year, the tax rate?
I haven't done any of those calculations yet. We don't even have our preliminary values. They don't come till April.
Half a cent?
So, so keep in mind that we likely, given that we're growing, we likely will be able to reduce our tax rate on the operating side. We'll soon talk about the debt side. Andrew Friedman's here, and still bring in more money. So what we may be talking about is a lesser decrease, if that makes sense, instead of an increase. Wouldn't want to commit to anything without having our, you know, preliminary.
It's just difficult to make a decision without having anything tangible to hang on to.
Sure. Understand.
Okay, we have any more questions on, on F? Well, if you have a question, now's the time to ask. You don't have a question?
No.
Okay. Then I'll entertain a motion for F.
Are you going to F and G?
We can't go together here. Well, do we?
Yeah. I think we can take action on the two items together with the understanding that the total cost is the 114, as mentioned, so.
Okay, and then we'll have the, and then we'll have the.
Yes, yeah.
So you were to.
Yeah, okay, so Mayor, I move that we accept F and G and that, with the caveat that we have a, a review, I guess is what you call it. A workshop at the next council meeting to look at possible reductions to make this up.
With the department heads.
With the department heads.
I'll take a second. Okay. Mary's second. Everybody vote. We got it? Thank you, sir. Okay, number five, consideration and action regarding resolution of the 2023-02 declaring intention to reimburse an amount not to exceed $16,550,000 for certain capital expenditures with proceeds from debt and placing time restrictions on the issuance of taxes and obligations. And for that, we have Ms. Clum.
Thank you, Mayor Protown and Council. We've got Andrew Friedman here from SAMCO. He's going to present the, the details on our next bond issue. These were bonds that were authorized the 2021 bonds election.
You're smiling, so it's good, right?
I'm smiling. It is good news.
Okay.
And I, and I was paying close attention to your discussion earlier. Y'all are talking about the M and O side of your budget. Our debt is paid for from the INS side of the budget. It's a separate tax levy, subject to separate rules in how you set that tax rate. So I'll be happy to answer any questions, but to go through this presentation, what's before you this evening is a reimbursement resolution, and what that is, is a mechanism that allows the city to expend funds toward a project, and that's outlined within the resolution, before you've got funding in place. And it's largely a measure to, to create an efficiency of keeping a project moving, whether that's spending money on soft costs like engineering, planning and design, or construction. And then when you do borrow money through a bond. And then when you do borrow money through a bond issuance and you close on those bonds and all of those proceeds are delivered to the city to be spent on the project, the first thing you do is repay yourself to the general fund or wherever you borrowed that money from to make yourself whole. The rest of the money gets spent towards the ongoing projects. That's the resolution that's before you this evening. And then what I really wanted to focus on was, this is being brought forth to you intentionally because we are moving through a bond issuance, not an action item for you today, but for the next and third phase of really a Plan Five bond sales from what was authorized by the voters in 2021. So I wanted to provide at least a history, that first page that we're on right now, propositions A, B, and C for streets, parks and rec, and the library, the amounts that were authorized by the voters, and then what was issued in 2021, which was the summer subsequent to that May successful election. We issued $9,023.7 million in 2022. So we've got $34.75 million remaining, and that's for streets and roads and then for $4 million for the parks. The plan is to issue Series 2023 here in the next month and a half or so, $16.95 million, four million of which is for the parks, 12.95 for streets. And that'll leave over the next couple of years, dependent upon how much growth we get and how your projects are progressing, the remaining $17.8 million to construct remainder of the street projects. And then I did want to go through a history, because when we sold these bonds, we took that to the voters for them to vote yes or no to approve these bonds. We had made a financial model, SAMCO, your financial advisor, and city staff, and explicitly Mr. Reiman, Ms. Quinn, on what the tax impact was going to be if the voters approved this nearly $70 million package. And what we had established at that time was we were expecting the INS tax rate to go up to roughly 30, 31 cents. And what we're seeing now and what this shows is, as we've moved through the first couple of bond series issuance since 2021 and into this third one, we're coming in underneath the interest rates that we were expecting to get in each of those bond sales, and we've gotten more growth than we were expecting to get in that analysis. A little bit intentional in that we try to be conservative when we're planning for selling bonds in the future. You're making an implicit promise to your voters to say, we're going to issue this much money and we expect your tax, the tax rate and the taxes you pay to go up by blank amount. We don't want, and we don't want for you all to be in a position to overpromise and underdeliver, meaning that we're too aggressive in our assumptions and the tax bill that they get doesn't meet the expectation for what they voted for. So happy to report that so far, we've come in under that promise that was, that was made through that election process. There's a lot of time between now and 2025 when we're expected to sell the last of these bonds. We've seen interest rates going up, really starting last January 2022. Expect that they'll continue to go up. But again, because of conservative kind of financial planning and assuming that rates were going to go up, we're still underneath what those promises were. So, you know, wanted you all to have, have that understanding and kind of a brief reminder of kind of the process that's gotten us to this point. At this juncture, we're probably close to two cents underneath what that tax rate promise was. Again, interest rates could go up 2% next year, and that eats into that. But we're still, this is really just to say that, you know, we're about halfway through this process and we're in a good position and the tax rate's lesser than what we expected. But the INS portion of your tax rate will be going up this year. And that's been, it's been a stair-step increase in that INS rate, and that was, again, communicated through the bond election process. But you can't expect that when it comes time to set your tax rate and you all are going through budget after we've sold these bonds, to know that a tax rate increase is coming and that was planned for two years ago when, when we went through the bond election process.
So in your model, what were you all expecting it to go up? I mean, we, you all did it conservatively, so.
Interest rates, again, over, over the course of five bond issues, interest rates ranging from, I think, 3.5% up to about 6.5%. For instance, I think we'd initially planned that the bonds we're about to sell. I think we factored a 5% interest rate into that. Right now, double A minus bond sale pricing yesterday locked in a 20-year rate, just under 4%. So, you know, we feel pretty comfortable that we're still, you know, well underneath those. We've sold some large tranches, this being another large tranche of bonds. Every time we come in under, we're locking in rates for 20 years. So it's not that our payments are going to change over time. We know what they're going to be when we set them. So long way of answering your question, 6.5% at the, on the long end. A brief snapshot of the timeline of events for the issuance of these bonds, looking for, this is the reimbursement resolution, which isn't a necessary step to the bond issuance, but it's one that we certainly want to have in place if the city's planning on expending funds. And then really your informal green light to proceed with the issuance of these general obligation bonds. And then assuming you all want us to proceed and staff to proceed, we'll go to Standard and Poor's Global Ratings, which is the rating agency that provides our credit rating each year, have a conference call with them, get an update on our credit rating, and then we would be in the market on March 21st. And that's when we would be receiving interest rates on the $16,950,000 and to be bringing that final bond to you all at your council meeting on March 21st for your approval at that time. We would know the impact, what the interest rate is on March 21st and know to this point, you know, where the interest rates stand, knowing that we've still got, you know, just under $13 million out there to issue over the next couple of years, but with a large chunk of this bond authorization really in the bag, so to speak, at that point. And the last slide here is really just an explanation that I gave on the reimbursement resolution at the beginning. So I'm happy to answer any questions that you all have relative to the resolution before you or the bond plan or anything else.
Counselors? Nick?
No, good.
Guess not. Guess we're good.
All right. Thank you all very much.
Thank you. So we need to make a motion to accept it? So.
Mayor Proton, I make a motion that we approve Resolution Number 2023-02 as presented.
Nick, a second. You got it? Thank you, sir.
Thank you all.
Number six is executive session. Do we need to? No, we don't have to have an executive session, so I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. What?
Can I place the adjourn?
Anybody second? Second, no second.
Just raise our.
Okay. Okay, I guess we're adjourned. Thank you all for coming.